You will call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
DeZiel.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Atkins Hoggatt.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
All right. First thing we have is public hearing. Public hearing regarding the application submitted by Hudson Ohana LLC, doing business as 517 on Main for a combination Class B liquor license and Class B beer license as the premises of 517 Second Street. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment on this? And by the way, we've got people on Zoom maybe perhaps for this. If you are on Zoom and would like to participate in this public hearing, please understand that I can't see everybody that is involved on Zoom right now. So just chime right on in. Don't wait for us to recognize you by raising your hand or anything. Just chime in and we'll recognize you that way. Please unmute as well if you have a comment to make and you're on Zoom. So once again, is there anyone that would like to make a comment on this? Anyone who would like to comment? Yes, sir. Step forward up here, please, to the mic. Identify yourself, name and address, please.
My name is Robert Comstock. My address is 1409 Third Street, right here in Hudson. I'm a member of the Ohana LLC that's on the docket for today. We're looking forward to hopefully establishing a full-service restaurant specializing in steak, pastas and salads to be right downtown, to supply an adult atmosphere with full service for family and date nights and so on and so forth. We look forward to embodying the history of Hudson inside the building as well as the history of the commercial hotel and the things that have happened since the commercial hotel to now. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Do you have a motion?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion second to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Public hearing is closed. Discussion of possible action on issuing a combination Class B liquor and a Class B beer license to Hudson Ohana LLC, doing business as 517 on Main for the premises at 517 Second Street. Anybody?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Let's see. This is now the item on the agenda for citizen comments. And this is your opportunity to talk about anything that you would like to bring up that is not on the agenda tonight. If you have something to comment on that's on the agenda, please wait for that agenda item to come up and you'd be allowed to make a statement at that point in time. Once again, if you are on Zoom, please unmute. Don't wait for us to recognize you. Just hop on in, say something, we'll recognize you at that point. Is there anyone here who has a comment? Yes, sir. Again, name and address, please.
Andrew Hetchler, P.O. Box 972, Hudson, Wisconsin. The thing I'd like to address was the event in the park the other night.
The P.O. Box isn't an address.
Oh, okay. I live in Hudson, but I'm staying with a friend. I don't have an actual address here.
All right.
Can we use my P.O. Box, please?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. So the thing I'd like to address was the situation in the park the other night where one side was heard and nothing else. It was very one-sided discussion where there was a lot of bad, hurtful things said about our police department. This is a police department that has saved my life and that has shown me unconditional love. When I was bleeding after a car accident, they held my neck and saved me. And I just don't see that that kind of unconditional love could come from somebody who was at all racist or a bigot or any of the things they were called at that event. What I would like to see or ask you is if we can host a second event where we'd hear from both sides so we can have an open discussion in the interest of free speech and hearing an honest truth about our great police force in Hudson. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am. Same thing. Name and address, please.
Michelle Dennison, 608 Grange Road. I'm here for two reasons. Firstly, to state to the city council that hopefully an emergency order and mask mandate are not reintroduced in Hudson. Mayor O'Connor, thank you for allowing your constituents to exercise their constitutional right to freedom of speech at the last meeting. That was a long night. When or if this amended item comes back on the agenda, we should all prepare ourselves for an even longer evening than the last one because from what I am hearing from our community, there will be more people here in opposition. I also want to speak about the listening session that was held in Hudson on September 14th, which was attended by our city council, mayor and chief of police. I certainly didn't know everyone who attended. I estimate that over half of the people who attended were there because, like myself, they wanted to show support to the police officers in our community. However, we were accused of attending because we were against calls for diversity in our community. Some speakers indicated that all of those who attended to back our police were in fact racist, intolerant, anti-LGBT, anti-immigrant, and summed them up all as being white supremacists. That initiated an emotional reaction from many in the crowd. The only reason I was at the event was in support of our police and others who wear a badge since this was a forum to describe what was wrong with them without giving them a voice to respond. Right now in our country, our law enforcement has a target on their backs. This was a private event in a public place. This was not the time to put our police on public display to rehash past or current grievances and every perceived shortfall while vaguely claiming support for our police. In the current extremely volatile environment, that simply paints a bigger target on our officers' backs and endangers their lives. My last count is that 43 officers were murdered this year and many more shot and attacked. There is a huge increase in anti-cop violence in this country. By using this public venue and not giving a voice to our police, the rhetoric at this event could easily inflame members in this or nearby communities against these officers. I know that not too long ago, some police officers from nearby communities were told that their names and home addresses had been leaked, so they needed to take precautions. I know some were in fear for the lives of their families and were taking several precautions that included sleeping in the basement and even other locations. There was a request for city officials to call out inflammatory language while using divisive and inflammatory language. There was a call for people to listen and promote inclusion while not allowing others with contrary opinions an opportunity to speak. You cannot say on one hand that you promote diversity and on the other attempt to ban, disallow and censor the free speech and opinions of others. You cannot on one hand insist on diversity of thought and opinion while attempting to ban diversity of thought and opinion. You don't have to agree with the views and speech of others. However, our First Amendment affords citizens who live in America, Wisconsin and this very city of Hudson that right. We cannot eliminate hate speech by using it. We cannot create diversity by restricting it. We cannot eliminate hate by encouraging it. We cannot create a safe community by publicly chastising and creating an unsafe environment for those we then ask to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Any other?
Darla Myers, 1098 Golden Oaks Lane in Hudson. I am here as a private citizen and not as a town of St. Joseph supervisor. Here we go again. It's like pushing play, rewind and play again. But we know evil never rests, nor do bullies ever give up. But good never rests either. And we know who with a capital W wins in the end. Regarding the anti-constitution, anti-police, anti-citizens for the St. Croix Valley Forum that recently took place in Hudson, we know there's allies of the bullying Hudson Exclusion Alliance on this council. You might want to explain to your friends from the exclusion group what defamation is. As the Minneapolis Star Tribune, City Pages and the SPLC have found out, defamation is an actionable item in a court of law. You should warn them that their names and public comments could potentially be legally actionable. We have all the police reports from the vandalism of lawn decorations from years ago to be able to issue that charitable warning. I'm not sure what the purpose was for the forum, but there were requests for the mayor to denounce a group that supports the Constitution of the United States. I'm going to ask the same thing of the Hudson Exclusion Alliance. Do you denounce the racist murders of black children in the womb by abortion? 947 black babies are killed every day in this country and in New York City, more black babies are murdered by abortion than are born. Where is the outrage? Do you denounce Hamas? Do you denounce the Muslim Brotherhood, an unindicted co-conspirator in the United States versus Holy Land Foundation trial? Do you denounce Sharia law? Do you denounce female genital mutilation? Do you denounce the traitors of Antifa? Do you denounce rioting and looting? Do you denounce racism and discrimination against whites? Do you denounce the hate that spewed forth from the mouths of some of the elitist speakers at your forum? Do you denounce the leaders of the Southern Poverty Law Center who make hate pay and have allegedly committed crimes of discrimination, intimidation, workplace harassment and racism? This is a synopsis by Ann Corcoran. The Southern Poverty Law Center has fired its infamous co-founder, Morris Deese, over unspecified misconduct. While the organization's leadership did not disclose the reason for Deese's departure, staff at its headquarters in Montgomery, Alabama, were told in an internal email that although he made unparalleled contributions to our work, no one's contributions can excuse that person's inappropriate conduct. The SPLC's leadership is mostly white. SPLC employees sent correspondence to management demanding reforms, expressing concerns about the resignation of a highly respected black attorney at the organization and criticizing the organization's work culture. Since the time this article was written, Richard Cohen and Heidi Baruch have also resigned. Baruch was frequently involved with handing out the yellow stars of hatred for conservative organizations. In 2007, Mark Potak of the SPLC explained that the SPLC's purpose is to destroy its enemies. He said, "Sometimes the press will describe us as monitoring hate groups. I want to say plainly that our aim in life is to destroy these groups, completely destroy them." So I ask again of the Hudson Exclusion Alliance, do you denounce the SPLC? As a side note, somehow the Citizens for the St. Croix Valley disappeared from the SPLC's hate map. I wonder why? Could it be the cease and desist that was sent to them? If you were present at the Saul Alinsky-inspired forum in Hudson, you saw the hate and anger on the faces of some of those speakers. Saul Alinsky is infamous for his Seven Rules for Radicals and here's two of those rules. Ridicule is man's most potent weapon. There is no defense. It is almost impossible to counteract ridicule. Also, it infuriates the opposition who then react to your advantage. Pick the target, freeze it, personalize it and polarize it. Sounds like the mission statement of the Hudson Exclusion Alliance. Don't think for a second that you will not be targeted. History has shown how ignoring the brown shirts worked out for those people. Jesus said, "Do not think that I came to send peace upon earth. I came not to send peace, but the sword." Jesus wasn't tolerant. We will not tolerate the shredding of the Constitution, nor will we tolerate bullying by so-called adults who are the role models for Antifa and other domestic terrorist organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Diane Yocum. I live at 1563 Gunston Drive in New Richmond. In just four months, the United States was almost transformed into an obedient socialist country. The government dictated that social events were unacceptable to attend. Church services, family funerals, patriotic celebrations and graduations were too dangerous. But if you're rioting in the streets, destroying cities by burning public and private businesses, destroying national monuments and threatening and murdering law enforcement as well as private citizens, that's okay. It's their right and there's no penalties. And most remained silent and bought into this events, these events without a fight. Small businesses were deemed unnecessary, nonessential and forced to close. But crowds to support the corporate money machines like Walmart, LOLs, Home Depot and Menards were allowed to remain open. But it's for everyone's safety, right? And for your inconvenience, they pay you a little hush money and compliance money. Say $1,200 or maybe $2,400. Or if you have children, they'll give you more so everyone stays home. How about more money for you to remain on unemployment? More than you were making at your job? Money that was taken from your employer when your employer was shut down? That should make everybody happy, right? Oh, and be sure to take that free money and spend it at the big corporate machines. In less than four months, banks and financial gurus convinced you that cash was shortage and you can't get change. But the banks said, "We'll give you an extra $5 if you give a $100 bill to us." They convinced you to use a traceable card for almost everything. The government closed public schools and universities, restructuring education system under the guise of public safety. In less than four months, our government demonstrated how easily people assimilate to guidelines or mandates that have no specific scientific premise whatsoever. In less than four months, our government successfully instilled in the majority of American population an intense fear that has allowed it to control every aspect of our lives, including what I eat, where I go, who I see and even how much toilet paper I can buy. Rather than fearing the tyranny of our government, we sheepishly obey without question. Instead, we are afraid of our families, our friends, our neighbors, those who hate us because of a difference in opinion or we won't comply with government mandates that are unconstitutional. People have lost their critical thinking skills and independence. What's next? You know, it's just a vaccine. It's for the greater good. Wait until you are told you cannot enter a store or business without proof of a vaccine. Wait until you go into public events and get a plane or go on a plane without proof of having a vaccine. Oh, wait, it's already being done with masks. Don't think it isn't possible. You already allowed the government to say when you go outside and when your child goes to digital education. Our education system looks something like a horror movie. Temperature checks, no changing classrooms, children avoiding each other hallway, eating lunch at their desk or six feet apart from their friends, designated bathroom breaks, no sports, no assemblies, no dances, no celebrations. Just come in and sit down and shut up. How did our beautiful country or state or city get taken away so quickly? The powers that be said there was a threat. They told us your masks were useless and then they told us our masks saved lives and they said social distancing was crucial and we believed them. If you had a party at house, they would invoke contact tracing and find you. But rioting in the streets is considered safe and their right to do so with no penalties. It makes no earthly sense. What's next? Take over our guns? It's for the common good, you know? It's not about the mask. It's not about the guns. It's about control. I reject the thought that government, local, state or federal or any single health department official can take away my choices and regulate my every movement. This is a slippery slope on which we are traveling. It makes me... If that makes me hateful because I refuse to submit to tyranny, so be it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments?
Hope this doesn't get too long. So my name is Sarah Bachland. My address is 573 Omaha Road. Hudson is where I spend much of my leisure time. I do most of my shopping here. My kids attend school in the school district. And I'm deeply concerned about Black Lives Matter infiltrating our community as well as being concerned about how the officers of Hudson are treated. We rely on them to keep us safe while we are here and while I shop downtown and while my kids are in school. So that's the purpose of me making public comment tonight. I want to expose the deception behind the Lakefront Park event, which was hosted by Addison with the idea that any further events are more deeply looked into before passing by City Hall. The title of the event... Thank you. Can you really not hear me? The title of the event as Diversity and Law Enforcement. It has been said by the organizers of the event that there needs to be more inclusion of people of color and LGBT in the city of Hudson and that they do not feel welcome. I'd like to start by saying that it would be hard pressed to find anyone besides the extremists whom no one respects in our community who do not want inclusion of anyone. I'm sincerely sorry if anyone has felt unwelcomed and I feel for them. But how can I be sure of how everyone feels? I appreciate the girls who had the courage to speak their personal truths who say that they have had poor experiences at schooling in their community. I would like to add, however, that when accusations were made against a group of people for burning and stealing rainbow flags, I obtained all the police reports and none of them were solved. In other words, no one was accused or convicted of anything. Still, the false accusations continue. In addition, City Pages was sent to cease and desist for stating the same and they complied and removed that false accusation. Now, when I asked Addison, the event organizer, why would we need to have a talk about diversity? Her answer was that it was because our area was 90% white or Caucasian. My thought to that was or my question was, why are we still talking about people's skin color? What does this have to do with anything? If we want to get away from division, we need to stop talking about the color of people's skin. We are one human race. I'm getting closer, sorry. My second point, I didn't appreciate the local police being subjected to this sort of public scrutiny. This was a sad display of disrespect for our officers to have to sit there and some not even being present yet have their names publicly shamed. If anything, the police department should be suing the event organizers for slander. Now, it will be said that the police department and the mayor approved of this event. I want to publicly state that it is my opinion and that of many others that this was nothing more than a social pressure that they felt they had to succumb to. The half-truth in the stories that were told of our officers was sad. I went in and read the police reports and had the whole stories been told, it would have been a more accurate story. But that was not the intention of the event, I don't think. It was to protect the officers as poorly as possible. Another thing I wanted to state was why was a closed case being publicly talked about? Wouldn't that have been in violation of the agreement to not talk about it in the first place? It was a closed case. Again, I bring this up because it falls on your shoulders as a council that approved the events of the agenda that Addison proposed. The police department and the individual officers should be suing the event organizer, like I'd said, and perhaps those who voted to have this event for defamation of character. I also wanted to touch on the email account that was listed on the event page for Addison's event. They claimed that the email was just a typo. I ask, who makes a typo on such an important event that they have in their own words worked so hard on? And yet lists it as an incorrect address on their own site. My point being that how was anyone supposed to get in touch with her to submit their request to talk at her event? My question is, was this intentional? She claims to invite conversation and different points of view, yet there seems to have been a predetermined outcome planned. I'd like to ask Addison two questions. Are you willing to make a public statement tonight to 100% deny that that email account was yours? And on a little personal note between her and I, I wonder, have you ever seen the movie Starship Troopers, Addison? Look that up. Point four. Again, talking to the idea of her inclusive event, Addison, and I'm almost done, said that people can submit comments at the time of the event. And when I asked if I could submit my comment, I asked her if when I submit my comment, will it be read at the event? To which my question was eluded again and again. When it came time to the event, Addison said, anyone who had comments can submit them upfront and it would be given to city council, which made no sense. How is that adding points of view to her event? This was nothing more than an act to give the illusion of including everyone's voice at the event. Not very forthcoming and again, a way to have a predetermined outcome of just certain voices. Some side points. One of the speakers read, "Looked up at the citizens who had rallied in support of our police and called us racist and a hate group and was then surprised when we got upset and rowdy after that." You know, I wonder why. Another thing I'd like to have on the record is the article that was written by WPR saying that John Kraft, by extension, was calling people to arms to the Listening Session event. That was nothing but a lie. There was one raw comment made on the event page about AR-15 and it was deleted immediately. Finally, I'd like to point... The last point I'd like to make is that the event was denied as being a Black Lives Matter event. Yet the talking points of the events are the same as the talking points of Black Lives Matter, the organization. If the organizers are so proud of their Black Lives Matter support, why are they not owning up to this event being linked to Black Lives Matter? The event was sponsored by Equal Justice Incorporated, who sells Black Lives T-shirts to raise money for the event. Addison also had put on a previous Black Lives Matter march. She's also pushing for a Black Lives Matter and LGBT curriculum into the Hudson School District. I'd just like to ask that she'd be more forthcoming about her views. And as stated in the beginning, this was a sad display of an event and we can do better. In the end, I'd like to ask city council to be more carefully reviewing any further proposed events because this event and everything that has come from it ultimately falls on your shoulders. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Unfortunately, I have to make a comment. Unfortunately, I don't really care to. But because I'm a little tired of people making things up.
Addison, I can see that this is you, but if you would identify yourself, please.
Sorry, I apologize. I'm Addison Filiacho. Due to the... If it's okay with you, because I've been having some people like do some pretty terrible things at the moment. I would prefer not to. You have my address on file. If it's okay, you know where I live. If that's all right with you.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So first, I had the privilege of hearing so many... So first, I've had the privilege of hearing so many people's stories this summer from the event on Monday. I had a random woman come up to me in the street thanking me. People messaged me after how much this meant to them as a BIPOC or LGBTQ person. Just having this event and listening has meant a lot to people and the city council administrator and the mayor. I thank you for that and so do many people. I hope that you continue to take positive action and you have a lot of support behind you. The only thing that I will say is that people who are claiming that they couldn't reach out to me, reached out to me through Facebook Messenger and I regularly, no matter what, aside from like two people who tried to contact me like three hours before the event, responded. The people who wanted to speak did not make a statement until maybe three hours before. And that's literally all I'm going to say about that piece. As far as my incorrect email address, I had changed it and I didn't know because of how my name is, the last name is, is very long. I didn't know if people weren't reaching out because of that and I also have a full-time job and a life and I was just trying to put on this event for people because they had asked for it. That's all I have to say and thank you very much for attending and coming and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from September 8th, 2020, regular council meeting. Approve the claims in the amount of $1,026,152.21. Place on file the Public Utility Commission meeting minutes from August 11th and 25th, 2020. Approve operator's license listed on the list sheet. Approval of the 2020 street maintenance project. Approve the request by Hudson Boosters LLC, Hudson Booster Club, to extend the lease at 1150 Kratley Lane North, Village of North Hudson. Approve Chamber of Commerce Kris Kringle Market Event, Saturday, November 21st, 2020. Approve a temporary beer license for Hudson Hockey Association, October 3rd, 2020. Approve Third Street Trick or Treating Event, Saturday, October 31st of 2020. Approve a three-way stop at Carmichael Road and Burl Oak Curve.
That one needs to be pulled.
Okay.
That agenda is going to be tabled by the request of the city engineer. It needs some further review before it comes to the council.
I'm sorry, Erin, you say we're tabling that one? We're not going to bring it up? Okay.
Table that one. Thank you.
All right.
Approve reducing the speed limit to 15 miles per hour at the locations listed on the list sheet. And approve renewing contract with River Valley Deer Management for the 2021 year.
Can you pull that one, please?
I'd move to approve.
I'd second.
All right, we have a motion and second to approve consent agenda with the exception of items J and I, or L rather, J and L. Is that right?
Yes.
Yep.
Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggatt?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Item L. Sarah?
Yes, Erin, I was just wondering if you could clarify for our constituents and residents, if they are experiencing a deer problem in their particular neighborhood, how do they reach out and who do they reach out to? I saw an email today from the hunters and it said that there was a few options, but I just wanted to clarify. I did get an email from one of the residents in my district with a picture of eight deer in his yard. And I wanted to make sure that he was going to be able to, but I think it's important that all of our residents know who to reach out to if they're in particular having a problem.
Right. So I think honestly, the best way to do it would be to contact the PD unless, Jeff, you think you'd rather do a different way. But I think that's probably the easy way to do it.
Just one second. We have Lon Fea here.
Oh, yeah.
I had a conversation with him today about contacting him and also about bow hunters who may be interested in joining his group and if they're qualified.
Lon?
Yes, my name is Lon Fea, 1080 Lakeview Trail, Hudson, Wisconsin. If there are residents who would like to have deer removed or would like us to look at hunting in their home area, either their home or a public area near there, they have a couple of options. They can contact the city clerk, who will get in touch with us, or they can contact me directly. My number is 612-875-3222. And you could email me at lonfeia, that's L-O-N-F-E-I-A, at gmail.com. In terms of residents who would like to participate in the hunt, we are very particular but are open to discussing adding additional hunters who prove to be willing to follow the very stringent safety precautions that we require. Does that address the concerns?
It does address mine. I was wondering maybe perhaps because of the added burden on our city clerk right now because of the election and a lot of confusion over ballots and absentee versus just all the questions she's fielding on that, maybe she's not the right one to get in touch with. Maybe we should set someone else up for that.
Debbie Andrews had helped me before when I had some questions about the contract a year ago. So she might be the better person to handle things.
They can certainly contact us, but I do think you're going to have a situation where a resident's going to want to call someone at the city. That's going to be the first person they're going to reach out to. So we need to have someone to tell them how to get ahold of us.
I think we can just have it set up. If they contact the city's general number, we can make sure whoever's answering can probably just refer them to Deb if that's possible. Or if there's days where maybe Deb's not available, we can bounce it to the PD and the front desk at the PD can take the information and refer it on.
Okay. Okay, very good.
I would move to approve the renewing contract with River Valley Deer Management for 2021.
Second?
Motion and second. Lon, just one question. When are we going after coyotes?
Well, if they're there, we can certainly take them. It's within the state law, so.
All right. Sounds good. We got a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lon.
Yep.
Discussion possible action to approve ordinance 12-20, adopting the Wisconsin Municipal Record Schedule for Retention and Destruction of City Records.
I could take this one. So basically, the city has the ability to kind of set a record retention based on the state guidelines for that. And then to do so, we have to submit to the state to get them to sign off on it first. So Becky has updated that. We've submitted it to the state and they have signed off on it. So now that that's occurred, the council can go ahead and approve it and that just gives Becky the authority to dispose of records, basically per state guidelines, which we just adopt by reference.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion and second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggatt?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended.
Move to adopt ordinance 12-20.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion possible action to approve resolution 18-20, requesting application for exemption from county library tax.
Good evening, council and mayor. Allison Egger, Finance Director. This is our annual application for exemption for the county library tax that we do to help our citizens as well because we are supporting the library. So we have to make sure that we are willing to commit to at least our three-year average, which is 351,583, which is less than what we did last year. So normally this is not something, an issue. We just move forward with it. But any questions?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion and second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggatt?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended.
Move to adopt 18-20.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion possible action on final development plans and certificate of compliance for Third Street Living at 618 Third Street, DPB Investment Partners LLC.
Thank you, mayor. That one's been pulled from the agenda at the request of the applicant.
Okay. Discussion possible action on a partial discontinuance request for Crestview Drive, generally located north of 2,000 Crestview Drive, made by Hudson Ford.
Thank you. Hudson Ford recently purchased the old Bank Mutual property, 2,000 Crestview Drive. This is a property that has approximately 10,000 square feet of excess right-of-way on Crestview. If you look at a right-of-way map, you'll notice that a lot of that excess right-of-way, which is kind of a remnant of when there was an old off-ramp on 94 that used to land along that area. We vacated a lot of it for other businesses and projects along the way. With them purchasing this property and obviously you've probably seen where they've demoed the old bank building, they are desirous of expanding their car sales lots. And what we're looking for, staff is recommending that we prepare a resolution that this discontinuance of right-of-way is in the best interest of the public or is in the interest of the public. There's two ways of doing it. This is a similar process that we went through recently on Third Street, kind of just up the hill from City Hall, the discontinuance. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. What we'll do is at a future meeting, bring back this resolution and introduce it.
You need formal action, Mike?
I'm requesting that the council direct staff to move forth with the discontinuance by city council.
Almost.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Discussion possible action on terminating the 1983 water agreement with Village of North Hudson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. If you remember about a month ago, we had the joint meeting with you guys, city council, and the mayor and the village. Kind of went through what a lot of the issues were and things like that. In your packet, you also have a memorandum from our attorney, Lori Kobza, who is also on the line here this evening. So if you do have any questions pertaining to it, she is available to take those. But what we are asking is to terminate the 1983 agreement with the Village of North Hudson. On July 14th, the Public Utility Commission voted to recommend that the city council determine the 1983 water agreement with the Village of North Hudson and notify the Village in writing no later than October 1st, 2020, of the decision to terminate said agreement. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on that or for me or for Lori.
I'll make the motion to terminate the agreement.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Discussion? All those.
Just real quick, I just want to make sure that we do this properly, fairly balanced and within reason for each other's communities. The way that last meeting felt about this, it was disheartening. So let's be nice to each other and play well and knock out a good agreement for each of us. That's all I got to say.
Okay, anybody else?
And then just a quick question. I think that terminating the agreement basically means, as I understand it, if I understand correctly, that it would put in motion for the PSC and the DNR staff basically to get both entities together to try to figure out the next step forward. Is that roughly what we're talking about?
Lori, you want to jump in just to maybe give your opinion of what terminating the agreement does actually mean?
Yes, I just hit a button. So now I can't see any screens anymore. So I'll just keep talking, hoping that you can see me. So what it means is that you'll have to continue to serve in the same way if there is, if the parties are unable to come to an agreement, then you could go to the PSC and ask for their assistance in trying to resolve it. But it doesn't automatically mean that the PSC and the DNR will get involved at this stage. There's still the opportunity and the expectation that Hudson and North Hudson would work on negotiating out an agreement going forward. Just give you the opportunity to do that.
Sorry. Is there any timeframe or any time limit upon which the new agreement would have to be in place?
No, what happens is that if the agreement terminates, you have to continue to serve based on the ordinance. And the problem is that you're going to want to switch to a wholesale agreement or a wholesale service arrangement. So you'll have to ask the PSC for approval of that. So if North Hudson and Hudson can't agree, then Hudson would go to the PSC and ask for assistance. So the timeframe is flexible.
Anybody else? All right, we have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion possible action to approve the COVID-19 amendment to the park policies for reserving space at city parks.
This might be a little late in the game now with the amount of park reservations we'll get the rest of this year, but I think it's still worth having this discussion and possibly approving this. So if we do have any more this year, we don't have to get a whole bunch showing up in front of the council again. And then even for next spring, if things are still happening, that we can go back to administratively approving these sort of applications, which is what we did pre-COVID. They didn't all come to council. So with that, we presented to the Parks Board a recommended addendum. The Park Board reviewed it, but they did add, if you look in the packet, they did add item three, which says require all attendees to sign into the event for future contract tracing purposes if needed. Renters are required to keep the main copy of the register. So that was added. The only thing I would say with that is if we're going to require contract tracing, I think it would be difficult to require all attendees to do it just because it is a public park. You may have people just wandering by, checking out the band concert playing and they're going to keep on wandering after a few minutes. So I would guess what I would maybe recommend to make this more realistic is to require all participants to sign in for the event. So that means that if it's sponsored by some sort of concert, all the members of the concert, the directors, the people that are helping out with enforcing social distancing, everybody that's directly involved in that way, they should have a list of those for contract tracing. But I don't see the feasibility of having someone walking around asking those watching to sign in. I also worry about potential conflicts that that could cause with our groups that are using it. So I guess if we're going to include contract tracing, I would recommend that it's just for the wording be changed for the participants in the event instead of all attendees.
I agree with Erin, but I disagree with any of this contract tracing or anything like this. I won't vote for this. It's an overreach by us as a council once again.
You know, Erin, and I had had a conversation with Paul about this recently. I think that for the people, as far as what you're recommending, Erin, the participants, participants, I would think that, that whoever is hosting this thing has a pretty clear understanding who the participants are. I would like to see this, I, I agree with your part as far as anybody else, I would, instead of mandating, I would like to see this permissive, that if people would like to sign in, that it's available, that we, that we just suggest that we make, uh, sign-ins available for those people that, uh, that, uh, understand about the contract or contact tracing. Uh, but like I said, I'd like to make the language permissive rather than mandatory, if that's okay. Paul, uh, is this, uh, who made the motion? Was there a motion yet?
No, I don't, there's no motion.
I presume this will be, uh, your motion, Paul? And, uh, and?
This is, this is from kind of what we had talked about, um, in, in parks. I, I can live with more modification, I can live with, um, a voluntary sign. And I think that the whole point of the contact tracing is to help the people. So? If you wanna be helped, if there's an outbreak of COVID-nineteen, we can reach you within fourteen days at whatever number. Um, if you don't wanna be helped, I mean, it is a free country. So I, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about contact tracing. It's designed to help you stay healthy, that's the entire point of it. So I think it's good for the city to offer it, but I can live with, um, and good with adjusting that language to, uh, a voluntary sign-in or sub-type.
Okay.
I, and I agree, uh, we're still moving in a net directions. The thing that I've seen is that sometimes people want too much information. They want complete, you know, phone, uh, address, email, that's more than is necessary. Uh, probably a phone number is sufficient. So that would make it more palatable to people signing in.
And the, the other thing that I noticed, uh, is there a reference in here at all to when this would, uh, when this would end? I mean, like when, what, how, uh, we should have some, some date specific on this to either review it again or to terminate it.
Yeah, there's nothing in there right now, so I guess what I would say is, you know, take this up again, maybe like in May? See how things are going over the winter, and maybe we just don't need it anymore. That's the hope. I mean, hopefully we can just get rid of it. But generally speaking, maybe, uh, if we take it up in May, that'll be prior to most of the events starting to occur, and we can revisit if it still makes sense or if guidelines have changed or whatever.
What are the current?
Probably a good drop-dead, uh, date in that. The first item says follow current guidelines. So, and a scent is covered, but by setting the date of, uh, May first forces us to review it properly.
What are the current guidelines for mask wearing for outdoor events?
No, uh, the governor's order is indoor.
Kind of fluctuate and they, or possibly get posted or moved, it's, it's hard to say. Um, but the actual guidelines are, um, it's, well, it was recommended for, um, for masks to be worn. Um, I'm trying to think of the exact thing, but I guess make it easier. Our current ones from the, from Sacred Colony, I've talked to her about how, uh, I've talked to the, uh, county health about how the state mask mandate fits in with, um, their interpretation for county health and things like that. And what, what they're saying is, is that, um, they don't necessarily, um, interpret the, um, outdoor, our band shell as a outdoor structure, um, but they recommend that masks are worn while performing just because of the projection. So whether it's singing, um, they also recommend that if it's a, if it's a band and they have, um, the wind instruments, I guess there's covers now, you put over the end of those. Um, but that's the latest that I got when I talked about this with the county, probably, well, when we talked about this last, whenever that was, we kinda had a rundown on it. So, so that's what they're recommending, that the performers do wear them while performing. Um, but as far as outside and in that general area, if there's a social distancing, at this point, when you're outside, it's, it's not, um, a direct recommendation to do it in the kind of outside area.
Do we need to put in something about mask wearing for performers and singers?
I think at this point, we do reference everything, so, you know, it, it does seem to be an ever-changing requirement, uh, based on new, new information as it comes in. So I think we're at the best bet right now, um, is to reference the guidelines that are out there, to reference that the, we currently have a state of emergency requiring masks. And I think that's the best way to do it, since it would be hard to keep this updated otherwise, they're, they're ever-changing. Uh, but staff will review the current ones with applications to make sure they know, here's the most current recommend, here's the most current recommendations you have to follow. So we'll do that with the applicants as they come in.
So, just to clarify then, we're going to ask that they at least provide a means with which all attendees and the performers could sign in with minimal information, with their name and phone number perhaps, so that, um, that that is, that the one thing that's mandatory is here is that the person putting on the event does provide the opportunity for people to sign in for contact tracing purposes.
Correct, we'll make that, uh, uh, that they, they will provide, um, the attendees' sign-in sheet for name, phone number, um, that, um, they, they, they may sign if they wish, sort of thing. We'll make it, make it voluntary instead of the required part.
I'd like to just make it clear in there that it's attendees and performers?
Yep.
Okay, so is that a motion? Is, are you making that motion, Sarah?
Um, sure.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? We have comment here, would you like to?
Um, I was just, I'm just?
Again, name?
Sarah Bachland, um, I'm just wondering, in the mandate, can you show me where it says to wear a mask outside?
There is no mandate, and that's what he's saying, there is no, there is no mandate to wear masks outside.
Okay.
And there won't be in here.
So, okay, I guess I'm, I'm confused why, why we would ask that then?
There was a previous discussion when the order first came out as to what, it also included outdoor structures, and there was no real guidance given by the state, and so our city administrator, uh, reviewed it with the county health department. And they apparently said, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, that they don't consider the band shell an outdoor structure such that you'd have to wear a mask. Is that essentially?
They thought that was a stretch.
Pardon?
They thought that was a stretch.
Yes, so the only reason it's being discussed now is because when it first came up, the order was new and there was no guidance on it.
I think, I think the question might be a broader question than that.
Oh, okay.
The reason that we're discussing this right now is we're putting together administrative guidelines that would obviate the, the need for us to, uh, review every single permit request for the park. So two meetings ago, we had maybe five permit requests that came in here. We took up every one of them for council action. We, it wasn't necessary. If we just have administrative rules, they can do that, uh, our department can do that without having to go to the council for a permit. So that's why this is here, to establish administrative guidelines so that the council does not have to consider every permit that comes in. Does that make sense?
Okay, I think so, thank you, that helps.
Okay, um, all right, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Andrew Hetchler again. Uh, so with, with the modern age of, of, uh, information and social media and news media and everything, I don't understand why, uh, tracing is so necessary, why we'd have to write our name in a book.
You don't have to.
Wouldn't, uh, well, why, e-even having that book voluntary, I just, I just don't see the point of the book when everyone, if there was an outbreak of COVID at an event there, everyone would probably hear about it by the next day anyways.
Well, that, it's not, that's not necessarily the reason why, I mean, you heard the discussion here, there, some people may feel as though they'd like to be contacted if they found out if it was, uh, decided that somebody at one of these events had tested positive and maybe other people at the event were, uh, exposed.
Sure.
So if, it's so for, Paul, I, I don't let me speak for you, but I think that's what you were saying, is so that people can feel more comfortable if they, they could sign in and then they would be contacted.
But is that entirely?
Hundred percent, yeah, hundred percent right, Mayor.
It's not mandatory.
I'm just wondering how necessary it is to do that and to, to spend the resources to contact all these people, and if there's something that happens, it's, it's going to be big news and people are going to hear about it anyways. That's, that was all.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Yes, sir?
I'm Matt Bachland, five seven three Omaha Road, Hudson, Wisconsin. I would ask that if this is something that is gonna be debated on, that you hold this as a separate meeting, so that we have time to discuss with people who are interested in the mask mandate, 'cause it seems like there's a lot of questions here, that a lot of people like to discuss, especially if we're talking about a public area like a park.
But this is, again, there's no mask mandate here.
I, I understand, but what you're saying is that if somebody wants to hold an event down there.
Right.
And if I'm a, let's say I'm a conservative event, right, and the city says that my people had to have masks, my people don't wanna wear masks.
They're not saying that.
Or contract tracing, they don't wanna give information.
They're not, you don't have to then. That's the whole point here, is they're setting up?
I know, but I think, I think that, what I'm saying is I think that it's an open discussion, and that you guys could take that advice and potentially work the, the words to match what we all have as an opinion, because that's what we're trying to do right now. That's all I'm saying. I think alike would like to know the words in the, whatever you wanna call it, as you're reading, the motion, right? Because if we didn't stop at the county or stopped with a mask mandate coming to these events, the literature would've been written in a certain way, a lot of it was vague. I just want this to be vague and it to go somewhere else that we were expecting.
Be, I think it's, to me, it's clear what the language is gonna be. Aaron, do you have language there by any chance?
Yeah, I mean, what, what language are we looking for? I mean, basically, the only mask requirements is if there's a, right now, a state of Wisconsin emergency orders, we have to follow that, whatever that could, how that could pertain to it, or, or if there's a subsequent one that goes into place, um, by the county or or something like that, you'd have to follow it. Um, but otherwise, all we say is you have to follow guidelines. Um, and then as far as the con-for masks, and as far as the contract, uh, tracing goes, again, that was changed to be a voluntary, um, available. So, so really, there's no mandates here, and the city's not requiring anything above and beyond, um, what's, you know?
Where?
For the state mask mandate. Um, and so, really, it's, all this is, is just laying out, here's what we can do so we can administratively approve these without having to bring every event to the council.
Where, where can we find this information you're reading from?
It's in the council packet. It, it was posted Friday last week, I believe, um, online.
Okay, um, whereabouts will we find that?
It is under? Yeah, city website, it's on the agenda for tonight's meeting.
All right, perfect, thank you.
All right, thanks. Any other comments?
I have a comment online, please. This is Kelsey Janetsky, five twelve Fourth Street, Hudson, Wisconsin.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna say that I'm in full support of this, and I really appreciate the city council taking up something that's gonna speed up these processes, and I appreciate that they are making this optional and flexible. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey. Anybody else? Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion's approved. Discussion possible action on city COVID-nineteen response.
This was a request that was made a few meetings ago, that we just include this on every agenda, um, for some general discussion. So this is kind of the first time we've gotten to it, it was on our last agenda, but we didn't get to it. Um, so, uh, basically, what'll happen is, is every, um, first and third Monday, the county is, county health is gonna try to provide us with an updated, um, information packet, um, on current status in the city. Um, as I noted when I sent out today's, they had a number of staff people that have been out, so it's not as detailed as it will usually be, um, but at least they did have some information for us to review, so we'll, we'll include that. Um, and again, we won't be getting that though until probably Monday afternoon of each meeting. Um, and that's, we're working on the county health timeline with that, and that's just fine, I'm just happy that they're able to work with us on it and get it to us. Um, so, so there's that. Um, and then also, as I noted, as, as we have these discussions with the council, if anything comes up that is substantive in nature, that would, you know, require some sort of resolution, ordinance, something like that, um, all we can do then is add it to the next agenda as a standalone item. Um, basically, this is a time for kind of discussion or some general direction on things that are not, probably, you know, like I said, not really resolution, ordinance, requirements, things like that, um, but more, you know, there's still room for general direction to council or for the staff on certain things, but if Kathy thinks it gets to be a little too much, we'll probably have to just add it as a future agenda item, um, to make sure that we're, we're covered, um, uh, by posting it and allowing for proper notice for everyone.
All right, thanks, Aaron. All right, we're gonna delve into uncharted territory here. Discussion possible action on convening in to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute.
Pulled, wasn't it?
Oh, was that pulled?
Wasn't that pulled, Aaron?
Correct, that's pulled. It was, but I guess I gotta, I have a kind of a question going back.
Oh, that's right, okay, I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I didn't look for.
I, I think that the council maybe had some conversation they wanted to have about some COVID things, quick?
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to, if I can, I wanted to toss out the idea of the Safer Hudson campaign that I believe was emailed to you early, earlier in the, the thought is that, um, you know, the governor's mask mandate will end on September twenty-eighth, unless it's renewed, I don't know about that, but what I'd like us to do as a city is really think about encouraging, um, businesses to, uh, require masks on a voluntary basis. And so I'm interested in, um, what I'm just calling a Safer Hudson campaign, and that would, uh, involve cooperating or working with businesses, getting some information to them, allowing businesses to sign up, um, who say, hey, we do think it's good for public safety to, to wear masks. Uh, in exchange, uh, what we would do as a city is we would list those businesses on our website as, you know, safer businesses to basically patronize, and we would try to give some advertising on our, on our website to them. Um, it's a policy thing, I'm really asking for a policy thing. Uh, and I'm not asking for a vote tonight, but I'm asking you to think about it and think if this would be a good approach. Um, somebody also pointed out to me that it would be really helpful to know which businesses in the future, if there is no mask mandate, are, uh, requiring or enforcing it, and which businesses are not, because that helps both sides. So somebody who says, and we heard a lot of them write two weeks ago, said, I don't wanna wear masks. Wonderful, you can, uh, look at the website and see what businesses are not on the website, and you will know where you can go to be happy. And other people that say, I wanna make sure I, I go to a place that there is a mask. Wonderful, you can look at our website, find the businesses you're comfortable with, and patronize them. So I actually think it would be really helpful, um, for unity in the community, I think it would be a really helpful resource, and I think it would be a policy thing that the city is saying, we do wanna encourage this. I think it is a, I think it is helpful, we're not gonna mandate it, okay? We, we went there two weeks ago, and we don't have the political will to do that, but we need to do something. And I, for one, am not comfortable sitting on my hands in the biggest pandemic in a hundred years in Hudson. So I think we should do something, and I think what I'm proposing is, or thinking about is pretty reasonable, and again, would help both sides. So it's not an action item, I would encourage you guys to think about it, and if you have ideas, um, you know, to bring them forward tonight, or if you wanna email them to Aaron, and maybe we can put together something between now and next meeting. Thank you.
Along those lines, uh, the chamber has a?
Can I interrupt?
That?
Excuse me, I think it should be put on the next agenda instead of having discussion on it tonight, because it's not on the agenda at all tonight. And it can be put on the next agenda, and you can start formulating your ideas now that Paul has, um, introduced it and explained it, but I think it should be discussed at a, the next agenda.
Anybody else? All right, I don't have anything, um? No, we're, we're done with the agenda now.
Yeah, per, um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I had, something that's been bothering me is that when people speak, they give an address and they say City of Hudson, and, uh, I try to figure out whether they really live in the city of Hudson, or they, or, or they are constituents, or are they people who use Hudson? And I'd like to recommend that we not be using mailing addresses, uh, but that we actually tell us what municipality they're from.
All right, well, in addition to the mailing address?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Mayor, then can I just give a quick update? Um, I just wanted to comment on the event that did occur last Monday. Um, I know that it's not on the agenda tonight, there's none of the topics that were potentially brought up, so, um, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew, knew kind of what the status was, although I've emailed the council, I think it's good for, for people to know as well that might be watching. So, um, so first of all, um, I would like to thank Addison for coordinating that event on Monday. Um, I think, you know, regardless of anything, it's, it's good to, um, to get information and to hear, um, from some of the and to hear, um, from some of the speakers. So, so thank you for that. Um, staff is working on pulling together, um, kind of some of the, some of the comments and maybe requests that came, um, at that meeting. So we're gonna pull in, pull together more information. We're gonna kind of put together, um, kind of what we took from it, um, and bring it to the next council meeting for further discussion. Um, I think we'd also like to try to be able to provide more information from the city side, uh, on some of the topics that were brought up as well, as we discussed earlier before this event happened, um, that, you know, it would be, um, kind of, it would be a one-sided conversation. And there was not, um, it was not the right time for staff, um, to be commenting on anything that was brought up. But we are pulling that information together, and we would like to try to provide also some, some additional information, at least from the city staff perspective, on some of the items as well, um, to, uh, provide some, some more information. So we are working on that. Our intent is to have that on the next agenda, um, for the council to review and discuss, and then provide any, um, further actions or guidance from that that the council might have.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.